Welcome, everybody, to the 2022 Budget Workshop Meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, first item of business, 2023 draft budget. That's all we're talking about, so go ahead.
All right.
Scott?
Yes, so, so basically, some background. This is Euclid Township's first real budget workshop that I'm aware of that, you know, we know that there's several new spots in the area that do these and in an effort to continue on building on the transparency of the budget process. Since taking over as manager, we wanted to have an open discussion with three board, all three board members and the public. Just a little background information, we will be presenting the preliminary final draft of the budget at the November Board Meeting. But today, we're going to go through some preliminary, preliminary numbers just to show you where we are year-to-date and then also what we're thinking for next year. So, the board in front of you has, I think it's on the screen now, a very general overview of the General Fund. And what I'd like to do is kind of go through these items and as, you know, if there's questions, Sue has more detailed information that we can go into. But I think one of the standout points that we'll start with is that our earned income tax, the Act 511 tax continues to be strong. We're very aware that that is contingent on economic conditions and we're also very aware that there's been a lot of talk about a recession in the near future, so. But that continues to be strong. Starting with item one, the real estate taxes. There's a small decrease there, but that's usually fairly, fairly constant.
That's due to the decrease in the amount of tax certifications that we'll probably get.
Okay. The transfer tax, the real estate transfer tax, that's also been strong. I think it's primarily just because up until recently, the real estate market has been strong. We're carrying over $650,000. That's what projected for 2022 and we expect that in the budget for that in 2023. So there's no change there. As I mentioned, the, we are for the Act 511 taxes. We are suggesting a $775,000 increase from 2022 to $7,650,500. We're hoping that that continues to be a, a strong income for the township. Building permits, that's one that also kind of stands out as there's obviously a decent decrease there. Last year, we had budgeted for a significant amount of warehouses to be built as part of a turnpike interchange project that ended up not moving forward. So instead, we're going to budget a little more conservatively this year, just knowing again that the state of the potential impacts of a recession. So continuing down, so licenses and fees, we have that staying the same at 448,000. Funds, we're decreasing them from 100,000 to 85,000. And what was the, what was the reason for the, just because historically, we've seen a kind of a decrease in that over the years. Interest, we're continuing that, 2022, we budgeted $60,000 for that. We're going to continue that for 2023. Grants, currently budgeting zero. Now, Sue, I meant to ask you this. Obviously, the township's always looking for grants and we're going out for them. How would we? Because I don't like the EAC is looking at a tree vitalized grant, so we would just.
A lot of times, if we do a project with a grant, we might put it through another fund just in case it, it straddles over like two years and then it's not, you know. So we don't put, I wouldn't say a lot of grants through the general.
So the next item, state entitlements. In 2022, we budgeted $306,800. We're continuing that for 2023. General government, that was budgeted for $34,600 in 2022. We're decreasing that by 5,000. And general government includes things like subdivision applications, zoning hearing board and board supervisor hearing fees, sales of ordinance. The sales of ordinance refers to, historically, we would sell our zoning code and our ordinance code and also zoning maps that has gone down significantly since the internet kind of took over there. If anybody's interested, our entire zoning code is on our website. Save yourself some money there. Continuing down, collection. I think there's, in 2022, we budgeted $2,26,500. That has an increase of $210. What is the reasoning for that?
I think I must have estimated something a little bit differently, but the, the fees are not changing. We don't have any additional people that we're going to be billing or anything, so it should be about the same. I probably.
It's a, it's a large number. So, last, last year, we did have to increase our trash and sewer fees. This year, we're not proposing any increases to that. And I probably also should have announced that we're also not proposing a tax increase because that's usually.
You're kind of burying the lead here.
So, moving down. Collection miscellaneous. In 2022, we budgeted $95,000 for miscellaneous. We've increased that by $1,000 to 96. And miscellaneous includes.
Looks like workers' comp that we bill out to Upper Euclid and West pipeline. It includes our rebate that we get using our P card and it includes a rebate that we usually get from Blue Cross.
Sale of property, we budgeted 15,000 for 2022. We're going to keep that at 15,000 for 2023. That typically refers to sales of, you know, our older vehicles. We are working internally to establish a vehicle replacement program. Obviously, we're very aware that used cars are at a premium right now due to the, the chipping, the chip shortage and the vehicle shortage. But we don't want to, we're going to err on the side of conservative budgeting there. Transfers, so transfers, we budgeted 2,000 in 2022. We're going to keep that at 2,000 for 2023. And transfers. Is that?
The reserves. The $2,000 transfer is the police pension administration fees.
Okay.
And then the last thing is the.
Right, so, and the last item, the transfer from reserves. You can see on the screen here, Sue put together just kind of a brief explanation of what we're doing.
Make that a little bigger.
Yeah, it's kind of too on our screen. Can we, we can't.
This is what, been too long with the Macintosh.
What these?
Scroll through that. Ooh, not necessarily read right off the screen, but we are, we do have the ability to transfer from our general reserves to kind of offset non-reoccurring financial obligations. And in 2023, we are expecting a turnover in our police force, which is going to have some overlap, which will generate a, we would call a non-reoccurring financial obligation from the township. So what we'd like to propose is a transfer of $350,000 from our general reserves to cover this one-time situation, which will allow us to carry a fiscally strong budget for 2023. So.
This is actually our, our actual fund balance policy that states all, you know, why we do it, how much is supposed to be held in reserve. And one of the conditions for use of the reserves is non-reoccurring needs, which is what this is. And from before, our 2023 budgeted expenditures are a little over 12 million. Twenty percent of that is now 2.5 million. And we are, we have a projected unreserved fund balance end of this year of over 4.4 million. So obviously, we have money in there.
And that would be in line with our fiscal policies.
Yes.
Should we, is anyone online able to ask questions right now?
If any, if anybody asks questions, we can certainly.
I have a question. Do you want us to ask as we come across it? Okay, so in reference to this one-off scenario where we're transitioning four officers out and four in, we have an estimate of four months for in 2023. How does that timeline correlate to their field training time? Is that roughly when we have four retiring? We'll have four potentially ready to be on the street?
Yes, so the plan would be to have those officers come in under their new hiring status, go into the field training program, which lasts three months. That's assuming that, that a candidate doesn't need that program extended in any way. So I built an extra month in there just in case any of the retiring employees may perhaps either decide to leave early or would come in and say to us that they want to go out on vacation and we wouldn't have access to them working in the department any longer. So the idea would be that it would be a transitional period where by, by the time those older employees who are retiring were leaving, the new employees were fully ready to go.
There you go. Okay, thank you.
I have one question about the Act 511 taxes. Do we just have a very high-level estimate of what were actuals this year so far?
I'm projecting, from where we are now, we're probably going to collect about 7.5 million in earned income tax. And actually, the 7.6 here includes the services tax also. So we're really actually only budgeting 7.1 for earned income tax. So we're still being very conservative with it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions about revenue in the General Fund?
See the little chart.
Pretty.
So now we'll run through our expenditures. In administration, we are proposing, for 2022, we budgeted $851,052. That's increasing in 2023 to 973,946, which is an increase of about $122,893. This does include a new hire in the administration department, full-time, long overdue needed. But the other expenses increases are just kind of related to the fact that everything costs more. And that'll be a reoccurring, current theme through expenditures. And tax collection, 2022, we budgeted $97,875 in 2023. That's an increase to $106,635, which is about an 8.9% increase.
And that increase is because we're expecting to collect more of earned income, income tax with the commissions on the extra that we're collecting, so it.
So the next.
I was lost. I'm found now, it's okay.
The next item is the township building. In 2022, we budgeted $208,101. That's being increased to $213,230, which is an increase of about $5,129. You know, we're always, we're always looking at how things are increased as far as keeping this building functioning and operational. We're also continuing to look at ways to make it more sustainable. So that is being, you know, considered as we move forward. What, what other typical expenditures are related to the township building? It's just operating costs.
Township building is any kind of maintenance that's done on, you know, on the grounds in the building, different things like that.
Okay.
Are there any specific elements allocated into township building that have to do with our Ready for 100 resolution? I know that we've been meeting in a committee format to talk about those types of decisions, but I'm just wondering in this coming year, if there's something specifically that we've earmarked any of that increase for.
I don't know if we budgeted specifically for any specific item, but we are going through right now with the DEP and the LCAP program that will be generating like a climate action plan as well as the energy transition plan that the EAC has already put together. I think we would certainly be open to funding these improvements as they're identified and needed. I think.
No, that's maybe more of a capital plan discussion because that's a longer-term thing. But the only thing I'm curious about is I know that we've, we've been able to accommodate some of these requests and these studies that we've done, but I don't feel like we have a very good grasp on specifically looking forward into the next 365 days, what we might be asking for. So that's just something I want to keep in mind. And again, it might be more of a capital discussion.
And that, to your point, Laura, that's actually a really good point because we do have, you know, we are looking at vehicle replacements and one of the, the, you know, the police have already incorporated hybrid vehicles. The administration's looking at purchasing a, an EV vehicle. What that is yet, is yet to be found. But I think to your point, the, and we'll, we'll talk about the projected transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund, but that would be a really good thing to kind of hash out how we'd like to prioritize that. And one of the things that's an overarching theme is we would like to have like a five-year capital improvement plan for the township building and that's something we're looking.
Have specifics, okay.
And for sure, as we're fixing things, we're making choices as we go along. As things break, we're replacing them with more efficient equipment and all that kind of stuff.
Oh, absolutely. And the hybrid vehicles was a perfect example. Like, these, these things are happening. I just feel like they're kind of happening without a lot of forward-looking on paper. So it's certainly something that we're making progress on, but something that maybe as we look into the next year or a five-year build-out, we could be much more intentional about articulating.
Agreed. And there's the police. In 2022, the police expenditures were projected to be $5,298,806. And 2023, we're projecting to increase that to $5,513,027, which is an increase of about $214,221. But for the year, it's about a 4% increase, which isn't too bad. Obviously, we had already kind of touched points on a few of the expenditures that are going to be incurred by the police department as far as an increase. So, good job keeping a good, good budget there, chief. For the fire marshal, in 2022, we projected, these are budget, right, I said, 2022, we budgeted for $174,775 for the fire marshal. And 2023, we're increasing that to $184,137, which is an increase of about $9,362. For volunteer services, in 2022, we budgeted $174,000. We're increasing that to $249,000 in 2023. And that is in part due to the increase in the ambulance funding for 2023.
Have we had any idea of other townships or do we know this yet about anyone else? I know they're doing their own budgeting process. We don't have any inclusion, but have, have we have any hints that this is? I have, that there's a, there's a, there's a community why.
I, I think I can say that there's definitely an interest. I don't know what everybody is doing in the, in far as these discussions. And just so everybody knows, the Euclid Ambulance did reach out to all of the participating municipalities and discussed a funding equation that was discussed at a board meeting, I think, a couple of months ago. But Euclid, Euclid Township and West Whiteland Township especially are some of the heavier users of the Euclid ambulance company. So for now, we're moving forward with the, I think it was $105,000 for 2023, based on that formula. I will continue to try and get answers from our neighbors to the north.
It's in the budget anyway. I'm not saying I'm against the budget.
No, but it's certainly something I'd like to know as well. For the zoning department, in 2022, we budgeted $457,407. Supposing an increase to $495,657, which is a net change of $38,250 for 2023. Health and Human Services, in 2022, we budgeted for $11,000. In 2023, we're budgeting for $13,000, which is an increase of 2,000. And I believe that it's due to an increase in the library. Which the, the Downingtown library.
Yes.
Okay. Collection costs, in 2022, we budgeted $1,853,215. In 2023, we're projecting or budgeting for $1,916,830, which is an increase of $63,615. That's so that we had mentioned earlier, there's going to be any additional increase to collection fees for 2023. Snow removal is, is in here, but I think we budget primarily that through their state liquid fuel fund, which we'll touch base on in a bit here. Traffic signals, in 2022, we budgeted for $45,350. We are increasing, proposing to increase that $2,750 to $48,100. Just for background, all of the signals in the township are maintained by the township, even on state roads. So this is for signal service and their, their maintenance work on our traffic signals. Streetlights, 2023, 2022, we budgeted $7,500. In 2023, we're budgeting $8,000, which is a modest increase of about $500. Highway maintenance, in 2022, we budgeted $1,205,444. 2023, we're budgeting for an increase of $61,678, which would bring it to $1,267,121. I think the increase there is primarily due to the cost of increasing costs of materials. Parking recreation, in 2022, we budgeted $607,259. In 2023, we're budgeting $685,550, which is an increase of $78,291. Is that the, the increase there is primarily due to?
Police getting married and having kids.
Increases in health care, so.
Do you have some younger employees who, the healthcare is just changing to that?
Where are we? Sorry.
Two of these look very the same, so we're trying to.
The, the one-page document is.
Yeah.
Now, I've lost myself several times here looking down at this as well.
So I knew in, in this, just to ask about park and recs, we're increasing the dark contribution by 5,000. Now, is that, that was from a specific request from dark? If I'm not, yeah. And, you know, and, and I said this, I, I would think it's, um, it's important if we see more from dark in terms of feedback on what they're doing in the community. I mean, we, there are, compared to some of the other organizations we give money to, they get a decent amount, especially when you talk about the non-emergency services organization. They get them. So I, I would like to see a little more from them about what they're doing and.
I did contact the whole dark.
Yeah.
So I contacted her, it was after we spoke. It was the next day, so I'm waiting to hear back. I just was seeing if maybe she could touch me about the query. As soon as I have an answer for you, I'll do that.
That'd be great.
It's that. And then I think we also budget for an increase to the LWA, increasing from 1,000 to 5,000. And that's in these numbers here. Intergovernmental, in 2022, we budgeted $10,200. This is increasing to $13,800 for an increase of 3,600. Sue, can you just explain what, what that line is?
Part of the increase has to do with the SPCA, the, the fees that we have to pay them. They've been going, increasing over the past two years. And also, we added, we kept the historical commission and the EAC budgets at 3,000 each, but we also added a $1,000 budget for the Park and Rec Committee to use at their discretion.
No, no. I, I hope you do. All right, so the next item is insurance. Our insurance we budgeted in 2022, $72,500. That is increasing $7,000 to $79,500. Sue, you want to just touch on the increase?
To the insurance?
Yeah.
That's just an estimate. We're just starting out getting our information to the insurance company. So I took basically last year's numbers and did a 5% increase. So those numbers could definitely come in lower. But again, we just try to, you know, budget as conservatively as we can.
And then the next item, other employee benefits.
That is a monthly payment that we have to make to the widow of our ex-chief, our chief vice. It was an agreement that was made many, many years ago and just continued to pay her.
Okay. And then the transfers, do you just want to explain that as well?
Yeah, that is our, that's our annual MMO into the police pension account. So this year, it was $455,614. Next year, we just did the resolution in September. So next year, our contribution will be 500,615.
So when you look at the net totals from revenues and expenditures in 2022, we were proposing a surplus of $46,401 for 2023. With the numbers as proposed, we're proposing a $36,061 surplus for 2023. So I'm going to go through some of our specific, first off, are there any questions with? I know I just read through a lot of lines and numbers, so.
I'm good right now.
Question. I raised my hand, I have a question.
Go ahead, Kim.
Hi, I live in the Rhonda complex and I'm wondering if the board has considered trash collection the way that West Whiteland does it? Because I know there was a huge increase from two years ago to last year's cost for, for trash and sewer. And West Whiteland does it by the bag. So I'm thinking that in alignment with the Euclid initiative to go green and sustainable, maybe we can consider the, the, the pickup the way West Whiteland does, so that each township, each household pays by the bag. And maybe that would encourage more composting and recycling.
I think West Whiteland's moving off, I was just looking it up because I think that they, they're thinking at least of moving away from that. This just as a comment, I know.
I mean, it's certainly something obviously the board can consider. We did just enter into a contract with Eagle Disposal for the next three years with potential for extension. We are always looking at, at our collection with some of the issues that we've had over the year. But that's certainly something that we can talk about over the next few years as we look towards a new contract.
Yeah, and I do think it aligns with our initiatives to reduce waste in general, but it would have to be figured out if it would be cost savings or how we would implement it. And we're stuck with Eagle for, stuck with, we're gratefully a customer of Eagle for the next two years at least.
But I could certainly reach out to West Whiteland and speak with their manager on their other program.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. I have a question, and I think I kind of got lost somewhere because this format is a little bit different from the format with the notes that we got. So I just want to be sure because I see there were a couple changes to what's represented here based on what I'm assuming is board feedback. Has that been implemented into this?
Yes.
Okay. As far as the expenses for longevity that were being discussed for administrative, as a, as an administrative benefit, is that reflected in this sheet?
Yes.
It is, it has been applied?
Yes.
Okay. I know that that was a question I raised last week and I just wanted to explore it a little bit more because I'm not sure that I understand the basis. I understand the basis of a longevity benefit, but as far as increasing the benefit in the 2023 budget, I'm just not sure I understand. I'm just not sure I understand the basis for that. So I wanted to have a discussion about it.
We generally, the new police contract, there is, one of the things that they're asking for is increased longevity. Right. Which we basically agreed on with them. And history has always been that the non uniform follows certain, you know, certain benefits that the police get under their contract, and this is one of them.
Right. That's just an expense, I think, I don't. In my opinion, the spirit of that benefit for our uniformed personnel is related to the duties of their job and the fact that they're a unionized group that's negotiating their benefits based on that. I certainly don't want to take benefits from anyone, and that's not what I'm calling for here. But it's something like, I think it was like $160,000 worth of benefit that I would just advocate that we keep the same. I don't know how other people feel about.
What was the, what was the?
I just don't think I did a comparison as to what they would be from what they were, you know, what they would been to what they are. The way the police do it is a little bit differently than we do it for non uniform. The way we do it for non uniform is beginning in year five. Currently, your fifth year anniversary, you get a $1,000 longevity check. Every year after that, it increases by $200. So your sixth year, you would get 1,214, et cetera, until you get to the max of 4,000. So I think it's 20 years you have to be here to get to the max of 4,000. What I was proposing here to go to into the same as the police would be to start at 2,000 and increase it 400 every year up to the max of 8,000.
To double, double.
So it's basically double case, so.
So it went, sorry, I just, I'm like drowning in tears. It's my own fault. So it went from 59,200 in 2022 to 129,200 in 2023. So it's a little more than doubled because I assume that we have some that will go up to the next tier.
We're just starting.
Yeah, or that'll just start into that. Is that just for administration or is that?
That's just for administration.
We can, we'll certainly proceed however the board wants to with that policy.
I think we can think about it, I mean, we can talk about it, but I'm. I don't have an objection to the current numbers, but I think we can talk about it internally as we go with the next month. So, yeah. I was, oh, I didn't want to say I did check for us, I was mistaken, they are still doing that. It must have been, I do know someone was running and he was thinking, talking. But I don't remember if it was the winner or the loser, who was, who was thinking of getting rid of that system. So forget what I said.
I have a question, when's the last time the longevity was increased?
It's been the same since we got it. Which was, I'm thinking it was somewhere around 1998, it was instituted for the non uniform.
So I mean, I think it's been a while at the same number. I don't object to increasing it at this point to keep it aligned with the uniformed officers. That's just my two cents.
I mean, I know it's something historically that we've offered. I think if we look at what other municipalities have done, and we look at a survey of salary and benefits, we're one of like three or four townships that offer a longevity benefit to the administrative side. And that's fine, again, I'm not trying to eliminate that. But looking at the amount that we're pouring into it, $130,000. I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure what the merit of doubling it is just because they've always had it. And that's what our uniformed personnel.
Well, I think the one of the weaknesses of timing to the police is that we don't get to make a cost of living increase on that on a yearly basis, so it jumps up in a step. Now, whether we have doubling it is the right step or or not, I think it's a good question, but as we do with our salary, we do your salaries every cost of living in a year, so.
Right, but the spirit of a longevity benefit is not a cost of living benefit, it's.
It's to retain.
Which is.
Cost, I mean, every year that benefit goes down if you don't increase it. So I agree, it's not a, it's not a salary, it's not the same as their salary, but.
Man, I don't, I don't want to make a completely parallel comparison to our uniformed personnel. But I'm, I guess I just don't understand how it just became what was negotiated through their contract was applied and then it's doubled. I don't, I don't know the merit, and I don't know that we have to provide an incentive to retain people because we retain a lot of our employees. And I think it's, goes to show our township management and the culture that we have here is somewhere that people are coming and being employed and enjoying it and staying for a while. It's not an issue where we're needing to create an incentive for people to stay. I think we're one of the top municipalities as far as retaining people for 20 plus years, which really says a lot about our community, and that's wonderful. I just don't want to continue running into an issue where as the township continues to grow and continues to expand its services and offer more for residents and support the staff in any places that there's holes. I don't want to run into a concern where we're unable to add staff that we might need because of the cost of benefit that we're offering, so. Just up for discussion.
Yeah.
Not a popular discussion, I'm sure, but I, again, I don't want to take away what we have. I just don't know if I can see the merit in doubling it just because what would that was a negotiated item? What would you suggest then? I would just keep it as what we've had it, which is, you know, the number that got us the 59, 59,200 for this year. I think the max, we max out at the $4,000 longevity point instead of doubling it to eight. I'm just asking that we would consider keeping it the same and start putting some of that funding aside to fill other employee needs, whether it's hiring or. I don't see a justification for it because we're not having trouble retaining people. We're already offering this as a top benefit compared to what other municipalities might be offering. And I think, you know, keeping it as is, is a good way to continue to honor what we have done for the staff and also start cutting back on some of the future expenses so that we can put it into other means the township might need to offer services and expand our reach into the community.
I can see that, I personally think that that hasn't, that benefit hasn't been increased a lot, like, I understand freezing it. If we don't want to, basically saying that this is a benefit, we don't really want to keep increasing. But I actually think there's a value, I agree, I understand we don't have a retention problem, but also it's one of those things that I personally think we should stay ahead of rather than behind of. And it's a benefit that stayed the same for a long time, and I would prefer it. Either we, now, if we want to break the link to this, the police department, I am actually fine with that. I think it's probably not a great idea to have this link one to one to the police department so that we're not evaluating this on a yearly basis. And maybe going forward, we don't want to do that. Let's say this, what, we haven't increased this in a while. There's a, it's a big. So I, I don't have a problem with where they are here, I don't think these are excessive. I think we could probably talk about these only, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't object to considering this something that we consider separately than the police department going forward. And if that means we go slower or not, but then the police department in the future, I think that's reasonable. But I would have probably liked to have seen some of these go up or faster earlier, you know.
When, I'm sorry.
But I probably would have not have kept them, I think, the $1,000 for, you know, for as long as they probably were at. I, I don't.
I think it's more of an incentive now than, I mean, by raising it, it isn't more of an incentive, a longevity incentive than keeping it the same.
Right, I mean, I just look at that and I see $60,000 that could almost cover the base salary of another person. And so I just don't want to run into issues where we want to be able to expand our services or bring in someone to assist with communications or parks plan, or whatever it is that the township decides that they want to do. I, I see it, I see a good chunk of it right there. And again, I don't want to keep raising the cost of the benefits that we're offering, knowing that that is going to be a wall that we run into at some point. At the same time, like everything, you know, inflation, things are, cost more money, it becomes less and less valuable. And turnover is very expensive. You know, on the flip side, it's more economical to retain employees than it is to hire new ones. So.
I think we need to discuss this.
I think we can continue that conversation individually, so. I'm going to jump to the sewer fund because that seems great. Sue just put up a generalized budget forecast for the sewer fund. In 2022, interest, we budgeted $25,000. I'm assuming this is also a rounding issue. As you can see, it decreases by $40, but for the most part, I think we expect that to stay the same. Sorry, I shouldn't have waited. So excited about the sewer content.
They all look the same, okay.
So for collection in 2022, we budgeted $3,821,591. In 2023, we're budgeting for $3,831,072, which is an increase of $9,481. The next item miscellaneous, I think we've just decided to kind of drop that category in general. We budgeted for $500 in 2022, and we're going to propose zero for, for 2023. So looking at expenses for the sewer fund administration, we budgeted $896,717. We are looking to increase that for 2023 at $991,795. That's a net change of $95,078. Collection costs are going to decrease slightly from 2022 at 10,000 to 9,523. Treatment plant, which always has great expenditures, keeping that system running.
Yeah, I'm surprised this one's going down. It's usually more and more expensive every year.
So last year, we, and I think probably the year before too, we had a pretty big upgrade to the treatment plant. And I think at this point, we're about wrapped up with that. So I think that explains the decrease there, knock on wood. There won't be any surprises for next year, but.
Does that include the operating costs of the treatment plant or? Where, where would that be?
429, a treatment plant is basically, is all the DARA related stuff, not Eagleview.
Okay.
Eagleview is included under.
Okay.
So disregard what I said about treatment plant, we'll get to that and to align.
But it was for the DARA, I think we had some sewer repairs that were done. So we budgeted some higher subcontractors in 2022 and not as quite as much that we're looking to do in 2023.
Okay.
All right, I'm confused.
So that's DARA, treatment plant is DARA and the Eagleview plant is under intergovernmental?
Yes.
Is that because it gets shifted to the, the, you're paying ourselves for the intergovernmental? Is that what it is? I don't understand why it's called intergovernmental.
Um. Because it.
Why did you pick that label, Sue?
Don't worry about it.
We've always wanted to keep the operation of the Eagleview treatment plant separate. Why it's under intergovernmental, I'm not really sure. Because the other things that are in there are what we pay DARA for. They're part of the, the actual treatment plant. Wes Whiteland's in there for what we pay them towards Clover Mill. We have some UTMA costs in there for expenses that we have for properties outside of Euclid. We do billing for some properties in Upper Euclid that are on our system. I think we just put it there just to keep it separate so that we can track. It was once owned by Hankin, that treatment plant was once owned by Hankin, and we were keeping track of some things there, so I think it just stayed there.
Okay.
Long term, we can look at the naming of that specific item, but the items that are budgeted for it are.
All right.
I've lost myself here.
I have a question. I guess I'm having trouble following this chart because we have a majority of our revenue coming in through the collection. 3,821. I'm sorry, that was for 2022, for 2023, it says 3,83172. And then the expenses coming out are for what's listed, but if we're transferring funds from another one of our funds into the sewer fund, would it be reported as a revenue? I mean, we're allocating funds from our general fund into the sewer fund.
Expenses from our general fund into the sewer fund to those.
Under expenses, okay, okay, that's where I was getting lost, that's.
We have the same.
First time, first time in the budget number game. And I know that this is something that we talked about last week, and I understand the spirit of the allocation and that we're taking funds from our general fund to put in the sewer fund because that represents a percentage of the cost and the overhead for the sewer fund. I guess my only que- question or concern with that is that almost a million dollars of that is coming out of the general fund into the sewer fund to go back out as an administrative cost for something that we already had listed in the general fund. And as the newbie that's not used to looking at government financed stuff, I guess I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can make that more transparent for what those costs go to. I mean, I know I had put in a request to you to just kind of help me explain how the salary costs get allocated and whatnot. Is there a way, I'm not suggesting that we like reframe the structure of our funding or anything, but is there a way that we can just show exactly where it's going?
I can look into that.
Does that? Does it make sense, does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, I understand it as that this is the administrative cost of the sewer and the sewer fund, you know, sewer, our sewer service, trash and sewer, whatever.
Yeah, I just think, I think the only place where I think it got confusing for me initially is like if you look at our general fund and you look at our overhead on administrative costs and you look at the salaries that are listed there, they're actually only 50% of what the salaries are. And if someone is looking for.
I agree with Laura because I, I had made that same mistake my first.
Right, right. And we had, we certainly have employees that have their bottom line salary just listed as their role and the number, but then other employees that don't. So I just think it kind of makes it convoluted and difficult to follow because when I first looked at it and I saw the administrative salaries, I was like, this isn't right. Like where, yeah, and then I, and then I found little bits of salary like in sewer fund, which makes sense because those are employees that are doing overhead on sewer and they're, but, but it just, it's confusing and it's like, can we maybe like break it down into, instead of just a pool of salary, just have it mimic how it's represented in the general funds and put it's the title of the person. Right, but that was, this is the first time I've seen that sheet, that wasn't like that before. So I don't know if there's a way we can just show in the budget that that's like this one today. I like the one today, that would have answered a lot of the questions.
Maybe what I could do is in the general fund, like, you know, under administration or whatever, show the full, full salaries and then have a contra fund. Full salaries and then have a contra fund for contra account under that that says, you know, salaries being allocated to the sewer fund.
That that's perfect, or like the chart you gave me that showed that just so that you can see where it's all pulled from. That way.
I will work on.
Okay.
Trying to come up with a better way to show that.
That would be, thank you. My brain was like.
Then the final item, insurance. In two thousand and twenty-two, we budgeted forty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna go ahead and continue to budget that for two thousand and twenty-three. Anyway, for so for two thousand and twenty-two or. Alright, so in two thousand and twenty-two, we showed a surplus of six thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and two thousand and twenty-three, we're budgeting for sixty thousand forty-seven dollars. That was a change of fifty-three thousand eight hundred and four dollars. So that is our sewer fund. Are there any additional questions before we move on? For the state liquid fuel fund. Where you want to go, fire the hydrant fund. Whoever he wants to.
This is such an easy pie chart.
Giant blue dot. The the hydrant fund is an assessment that is placed on residents that live within six hundred feet of a fire hydrant. I do believe that that also accounts for residents getting a break in their insurance based off of their proximity to a fire hydrant. But in two thousand and twenty-two. We budgeted for fifty thousand dollars. We're gonna continue that in two thousand and twenty-three, so there's no change there. Aqua, as many, our residents may already be aware, is either has or is raising their rates for water. We do project there to be an increase in our costs. Our already has been an increase to our costs. We do kind of supplement this charge with the the water fund. We do expect that to increase by about fifteen thousand dollars from ninety thousand in two thousand and twenty-two to a hundred and five thousand in two thousand and twenty-three.
How much is still in the water?
How much should we have in there? Right now, probably a little bit less than two millions.
So that is something that we may want to look at in the future is the fact that this is just an ever increasing cost. But for now, we're not proposing any increase to to that fee.
So just to the history, the water fund was when we sold the water system.
Right.
Yeah.
And part of the water fund was always to offset the future. Increases in water rates that would come from Aqua, meaning the water.
Intended to make up the difference. I don't think we ever thought it would be quite this big of a difference.
Right.
Water fund was also used for many different special projects throughout the years. This, yes, this. Lots of other things that we've done with it. But it probably will, I mean, going a hundred and some thousand dollars a year. Taking it out of there, it's not, obviously not going to last forever.
Anything else you want to add on the hydrant?
Well, I would, I would think we'd want to. Start easing the the. Rather than, you know, I know a hundred thousand dollars and there's a two million dollar, I mean, it's not like it's around the corner, but it's. If. I don't know if we want to just empty it and then say, hey, everyone, you have the.
Oh, it'd be a rude awakening. Yeah.
It's something that we need to look into our options to do for the hydrant fees.
How can we go to state liquid fuel? The remaining fund. The state liquid fuel fund is an allocation that we get from the state of Pennsylvania. No, this is, this is a beneficial thing. We did get, so in two thousand and twenty-two, we budgeted for a state appropriation of five hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. I'm talking with Sue before this meeting, we did get our initial letter from PennDOT, which has this budgeting six hundred and one thousand five hundred and two dollars for two thousand and twenty-three. This is an increase of twenty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars. This fee is kind of a breakdown that municipalities receive from the gas tax, the state gas tax. Which then goes into our road projects and also other purchases related to road maintenance. For the most part, with this specific fund, I mean, obviously, we're expecting a modest increase from two thousand and twenty-two. And as far as expenditures from this, like I had mentioned earlier, snow removal in two thousand and twenty-two, we budgeted fifty thousand dollars for snow removal. Well, I don't expect it to snow at all in two thousand and twenty-three, or at least I'm keeping my fingers crossed. We are increasing that. To budget for seventy-five thousand in two thousand and twenty-three. I think we had a very interesting winter last year with several smaller storms than. Unfortunately, added up.
Yeah, what was our expenditures this year for snow? Do we?
There's no, you can't predict.
But I'm saying for two thousand and twenty-two, did it, did it go over the fifty thousand dollars?
Um. We spent a little over sixty-six thousand dollars just on salt and whatnot. In two thousand and twenty-two, and we may, you know, spend a little bit more.
Yeah, it is the third in a row. It might be like last year. Lots of little storms. Hopefully not.
And we also use this fund for repair to road equipment, budgeted for twenty-five thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-two. We're decreasing that to twenty thousand in two thousand and twenty-three. Highway and general maintenance, we budgeted ninety-four thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-two. We're proposing to decrease that by twenty-three thousand dollars to seventy-one thousand. So what was, just because that's obviously a bigger drop, what was the reasoning? Okay. We'll look into.
Yeah, I'm not really sure.
Just making sure that that's correct, but highway construction, that's our road improvement project.
That is the large project that we do.
That we budgeted four hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty-two. That's kind of the target that we try to hit around every year. So two thousand and twenty-three, we're budgeting for four hundred thousand dollars again. One thing that we will have to watch is obviously with the increase in oil prices that has led to an increase in asphalt prices and various other materials that are used for road projects. So it's kind of hard to predict that for two thousand and twenty-three, but hopefully it's not too much of an increase.
Is the street sweeping in the general maintenance highway?
Sweeping is included in highway maintenance.
I know. Are streets clean?
Can we just buy the sweeps?
If it were up to me, only if it were up to me, I'd put Doug in it.
So that that was the discussion we prepared for our specific funds. Along the lines of purchasing a street sweep, for one of the things we kind of wanted to have an open conversation with the board about was. Obviously, the township receives, I think, approximately one point nine million dollars in ARPA funding. We have been utilizing that for various projects, but I think for two thousand and twenty-three, we kind of wanted to get a better sense from the board as to how they'd like to see those funds spent. One of the things we've been trying to use as a rule, just because of auditing requirements for the. The use of these funds is trying to keep the amount spent each year under seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But I have heard from speaking individually with board members that there was a desire to invest that into recreation and other, you know, more fun projects than. You know, building improvements and things of that nature, so. Obviously, we want to have an open conversation related to the use of these funds. We can have that now or we can have it over time, but it is something that we're looking at just how we'd like to allocate those funds. And unfortunately, to some extent, it gets more complicated because it's not just ARPA funds, it's all federal funds for the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we are still working with FEMA on some of the issues related to IDA, so. It could also be impacted by any other grants down the line that are federal funds. Most of the grants that we're working through right now are state funds through the D C E D, but some of them do get their funding sources from federal. It's of. Points, so. What do you, what do you think?
I mean, the funds were are, you know, have been dispersed to. Combat the effects of the pandemic, so different municipalities. And I mean, we've seen our parks use increase a lot. People have enjoyed the um. Outdoor recreation, you know, and I think we could definitely improve our offerings that way. That's something that would improve health and safety in general. Also, any upgrades to digital stuff so that we can make sure that should this ever happen again, you know, we'd be able to maintain, you know. Communications and accessibility of meetings and stuff with the public. So those are two things that I think would be well spent. What do you guys, anything?
Along the lines, we've talked about this, the completing some of the trail gaps. And we would need some, some improvement on. Timberlake here, and I think we should do that. That's the one gap that takes us. We can't, well, there's going from Eagleview into into, not Eagleview, I'm sorry, Rhonda. Into the West Whiteland, the trail there, there's that, there's that gap. And if we could figure out, I don't think it'd be that expensive, but I I know Norwood Bird is the, is part of the problem. Because that's not totally under our control, but Timberlake is, and I think we could have like a dedicated bike lane. Or some kind of, I know, and you know, I I think we could put that in there and it would be relatively cheap. See, it's just a matter of of time and, you know, and effort. That that, and I, Norwood Road is a different question. I think we would need to do some, I think we need to get permission from PennDOT, right, as.
Nor- Norwood's, it's a township road.
No. Right? Oh, new, I'm thinking of new.
I keep saying Norwood. New coming road, yeah, so we don't have public control of that route. And the other part is, and I know we don't have public control, this either is the trails from the sixth grade center down to Pennypacker.
Yeah, we're in it.
I know the, I know the issue, so there's more than the money, but if if money, and there's, yeah, so there's two things that if if. There's going to dedicate a certain, it's a small amount, it wouldn't be that big amount of money, but I think there's two areas that need improvement. I'd also like this, well, we've talked about some improving some of the um, the the sports. Field and thinking less of the actual fields ones, but like the basketball courts and things like that, tennis courts, just improvements on theirs. We were just talking about park and rec stuff.
Skate park.
Yeah, maybe skate.
Nature play park. What else? I have lots of dreams.
But I don't think we can never have enough pickleball courts.
Yeah.
That's, that's already taken care of.
Uh, restaurant, I mean, honestly, the, our main L Y A park, the fact that there's no act, that is still porta potties, no actual restroom. I mean, that goes with health and safety to me, like having, you know, water to actually wash your hands and a toilet that were flush. Would be a huge improvement, in my opinion.
Yeah, I don't know what that would.
Because COVID, we took away all the porta potties, remember?
And then people would throw the firecrackers.
Well, yeah, right, they they turn them over. I mean, you can't turn over a real, actual.
For some reason, that's always hard, it's mostly targeted, yes. It's always the firecrackers with the train over.
Which is why we need the skate park to entertain those kids.
Because there's, that's everyone's, the kids coming from the middle school.
Well, it is something, obviously, we've talked about before, as we, you know, we put a security camera in Shimonah because we've had issues there. And Target was one of the parks that we were also targeting for a security camera, just because we've had a significant amount of vandalism there.
That's, that's sad to me, that we have to put cameras for vandalism. We just need to figure out a way to entertain these kids. I would agree. No, I don't. I'm in the, I'm the mix. I have a nineteen-year-old. And three twenty-year-old somethings. They're not grown up yet. I support all of this. I think it's great. I think a common theme that we all listening to this seem to have is investing in our outdoor spaces. Whether it's trail connections, parks and rec opportunities, certainly opportunities for our kids to have places to go. I would love a skate park. I would love some, some bike trails, both paved and single track. I think we have a really good, solid group of local kids that spend a lot of time outside and would really get a lot of use out of that kind of thing. I guess I would kind of take that conversation and this like wishlist of ARPA funds and all these things that we would like to have vision for into the next year. And kind of when we're talking about the capital plan. That's what I was going to to bring up. You know, we've gone through each fund, but I don't feel like I have a very good grasp of what our capital expenses and requests look like for the next year. I haven't seen anything specific by a department. I know it's broken down in our capital improvement fund spreadsheet. That kind of shows just by line by department what we're looking for, but I'm not sure exactly what those items are. And if we have any consensus on whether they're solidly in the budget or if they're wishlist items. So I guess I was hoping you could tell me a little bit more about the upcoming capital expenses that we might be drawing out of this fund. Whether they're relative to the police department or Parks and Rec and where the status of that, like, are they, are they in? Are they maybe in, are they?
You'll see in in your notes, like in the general fund notes, like especially under like four thirty-eight. There is no number in the budget, but there is a list of items, that's their kind of wishlist. It would be paid out of the general fund, it would be something that we would look for taking, be taken out of the capital improvement fund. I believe there is the same thing in the sewer fund. Under four twenty-nine, seven fifty, where Jeff Sees has listed the vacuum truck and quite a few other.
I saw that, yes, I did see that one in the notes.
They are, we do have kind of a wishlist in there. And, you know, as of right now, we're kind of playing, playing it by ear with the capital improvement fund. But I spoke to the chief about putting the list together for me on it like a five to ten year basis, what we might need. And we, and we really want to start, you know, to get that formalized for each department. But right now, we're just kind of, he's already done it.
He didn't sit through this meeting for nothing. He's got a list.
You're an A student.
I know.
So that is something we're trying to finalize, but we do give them that option when they do their budgets to put their little wishlist in there. And that's where we get the information, some of the information from on an informal basis.
What, what um? What is there, how's the hybrid vehicle working? Like, I heard, I'd heard that some people weren't happy with, there is another department.
So we have had no maintenance issues, no issues with our upgrading concerning the electrical systems. And we've also realized to date about a six thousand dollar savings in.
Wow, and when did we, like, what, six thousand dollars since when?
Well, we're slowly changing that over. We still have several vehicles in our fleet that are all gas motors. But not necessarily on patrol. We have one vehicle left at the moment that is an all gas motor on patrol. We would be slated to turn that vehicle over in two thousand and twenty-three. And then we will get a better sense of having an entire calendar year to be able to look at the fuel usage from there. But it's been significant, particularly because with many of the systems that are in those police cars. The cars tend to need to be running all of the time, and so a typical gas motor is going to run for a twelve-hour shift. It's bad for the motor ultimately as the vehicle life gets older and. And it's certainly not great for fuel usage either. The advantage that we've seen with the hybrid is that that vehicle monitors, monitors its systems on its own, so when that vehicle is in park and, and it's sitting, it will turn off on its own and run off of the batteries until the batteries are depleted, at which point then it will turn itself back on, it'll do a quick charge over the next fifteen minutes or so, and then it'll cycle back off again. And so it's that cycling of those extended periods of time where the vehicle is not running with its gas motor. It's causing us to start to see that, that savings.
Do any local or regional departments use all-electric vehicles for anything yet?
So I'm not aware of any departments that have all-electric. There is a department near us that recently outfitted a Tesla, I believe a Model Three, to be used as a patrol car. I don't know, I, I know that they did not necessarily are in the outfitting of all of the systems that you might typically see in, in a police car. And I don't know how it's been performing for them. My understanding was that perhaps they were going to be using it in a limited capacity on patrol. One of the things that we try to balance when we're purchasing cars for use on patrol is making sure that it's a fleet vehicle so that when you take it in for warranty issues, those issues actually will be addressed because the car is designed to be used in that manner. And then the other component that we're generally looking for is something that's actually police rated. And, and again, the reason for that is because they tend to have different things on them from their passenger car models, like extra heavier steel wheels, ski bring tires. If they're still a gas liter compartment, they have heavier duty alternators, you know, those types of things, and then they're backed by the manufacturer for that use. So my hope is that ultimately, I would love to switch to all-electric. I hope that Ford will ultimately make the Mach-E a police used vehicle. They did put it in testing along with the pickup truck from the Lightning this past calendar year, but the Michigan State Police does a national test every year. And those cars performed quite well, but they haven't yet sort of been put in as a, as a police car. But my, my hope is that that's going to come.
I think the Teslas seem a little small.
They, they're very small. And so the Mach-E might be the next better version in that it's a crossover, it's sort of that, that vehicle that's in between a sedan and an SUV. Unfortunately, they have generally, by all models, done away with a police car. Most departments are, you know, purchasing SUVs, that's really the only thing that they can purchase, including the Dodge Charger was one of the last police cars that were left in that Dodge is getting ready to move away from the Charger and ultimately come out with an all-electric model of some sort. You know, want to see what happens. I'm very interested, though, in the idea of switching over to all-electric.
Or bicycles, no, they, they have no energy requirements, except for human fuel.
So is the one hundred and seventy-five thousand, two thousand and twenty-three budget under police for the capital improvement fund, does that encompass these requests?
You're talking about in my spread, this spreadsheet here?
This. Yeah, yeah.
It probably would, I, I will admit, these were just numbers that, you know, are kind of guesses.
Right.
Now, there was not a whole lot of anything behind that because, you know, we still have the ARPA funds, we have a capital improvement. We're trying to juggle between the two.
Right.
To make the most sense out of how they use the funds. So these numbers that I put in as the budget for the capital improvement were just a guess.
Okay.
Now we have a detailed memo from the chief of police.
Oh, you got one too. All right, so based off that, I guess I kind of have two comments or requests or items for this, for discussion. And the first would be as we roll into two thousand and twenty-three and we refine some of the capital requests, whether they're the police department or the dump trucks or whatever it is, which I don't think can possibly all be reflected here, just looking at the numbers. Can we have another workshop meeting to kind of refine the capital requests and just? I mean, I really, I like the conversation that we're having as far as the vision of the board and investing in our parks and stuff like that. And I don't feel like we've really had an opportunity to fully unpack it all and give guidance as far as what we'd like to see and maybe where it falls, if it's a one-year project, if it's a twenty-year project. Like, I just feel like there's a lot of opportunity for us to kind of dump all those ideas and wants out and decide where there's consensus and have the community weigh in. So that would be my first thing, like, maybe at the end of the first quarter next year, we just have a workshop session where we kind of check base on where we are with the federal funding and where we are with some of the needs that the departments have. And then kind of complimentary to that, I'm wondering if it would be helpful to the staff and helpful to the board if we, in an attempt to transition to a more forward-looking budget in like a five-year build-out, like you said, and a more detailed capital plan that, you know, looks into our computer replacement needs or our vehicle fleet, you know, I've heard you say like, she was like, I'm dying to get a, you know, a grip on car replacement projections. Yeah, all of that. Is that something that we can enlist the assistance of a consultant with to come in and sort through and get done? So that come two thousand and twenty-four, when we're looking at our projected budget, we can implement all these things. I mean, I don't want to continue adding, making more asks of the staff because I know that you guys are like fending over backwards and I don't help because I'm always like, can I have another document? You know, but I think that something, a consultant to do a scope of work for something like this would not be a significant investment. And if it's something like ten thousand dollars and it would give us a build-out and get us through that instead of working through it internally. Yeah, I, I just feel like if we can invest that reasonable amount of money and come out four months from now with a document that really, you know, sorts through it. I'm just wondering if that would be helpful to you, first of all, and if it's something that the board would find useful. Because I really want to have more conversations about fun stuff like skateboards instead of sewer fund and skate parks and all that stuff. And I feel like it would also, it, it would alleviate some of the, like, things that come up suddenly that could be built eight years out that we could, you know, I, I don't, I don't feel like I have a very good grip on the expenses that are coming up next year. And while there's certainly been discussions about them and, and they're kind of in a wishlist form, if we can be more intentional about, I don't want to say more intentional, like, we're not being intentional, but if it's on paper and we're all on the same page, it's not always like an emergency when it happens. And it's, you know, if, if we're replacing tasers or if we're doing something that's going to be ten years from now and we're doc, you know, it would help me.
They're saying replace before it breaks.
Definitely on our radar, something that we are definitely planning on doing, doing very soon and getting it done.
Okay, and is it something that would be helpful if we brought someone in to help implement that process? Like, would that alleviate some of the work for you and streamline the process?
Hard to say, I mean, yeah, the consultant would still need the information from us.
Right.
You know, would that be, you know, just another step that we could be doing this ourselves? I mean, I would, I would rather say, let's give us a shot.
Yeah.
To try to do it. If we seem to have an issue with getting some things done, then maybe we look outside.
Okay.
I a thousand percent agree with the idea of looking more like long, longer term. And it's just something that has been, I don't want to say short-sighted in previous years, but, you know, I don't like when these emergency situations come up as well, so.
Well, and, and like I said, we're, we're fortunate in that they're not really emergencies because we have money and we know that these expenses are coming. But just like looking through the documentation in the capital improvement fund, I think that we could, it would be helpful for someone like me to kind of break it down more and have more specific items planned out for, as they depreciate and as they need to be replaced. Just a good look forward on paper. Sounds good.
That, that's all we had for this evening. Moving forward, we will be finalizing the budget document for a formal presentation to the board in November. Where any official, well, there won't be any official action in November. We'll hear the presentation and then we will be back to the board for final adoption in December. There'll be an ample opportunity for public comment in the, in the process. And I expect some people may be watching this video later. If, you know, obviously, if you have questions, you can always reach out to staff or attend the November board meeting.
And then the draft budget will be up online after the November board meeting, or we'll be, we'll be able to put it up before the meeting so people can prepare questions.
So we present the budget in the November board meeting and then we advertise it and post it to the website.
Okay.
Comment period before adoption.
Okay, sounds good.
Do I have to read the announcements?
If you go.
I wasn't sure, I just put them on there.
Thank you.
I think you read them last.
I, I did, I read them last meeting. I think mainly, well, let's see, the monsters mask and pollinators. October twenty-nine, one to three, that sounds fun. Oh. Okay.
Is there any?
Oh, any, Tony, do you have any comments about the budget? We're about to wrap up. No, that's it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second, all in favor. Bye.